And I tried to keep it real simple, as simple as possible, okay? And I don't have yet tried to do the same with the expenditures. And basically, this is, in the first column, you'll see the approved budget that was adopted by the court, and then you will see the actual revenues.
Do you have an extra one? I didn't bring one.
Uh, yes.
I didn't even print it.
I didn't print mine, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner. Come on, I need one.
It was so much paper that I didn't want to print it.
I didn't want to print any of them.
I went over it.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you on the long paper?
I'm on the revenue to actual fiscal year 2010.
Okay.
Page one.
Page one, page one, yes. Okay. Okay, anyways, I was saying, you'll see the approved budget, and that was the budget that was adopted by Commissioner's Court for fiscal year 2010. The next column will show you the actual revenues that we have recorded as of March 31st, and then you will see a variance. A negative variance indicates that revenues have already exceeded what was budgeted, so that is a good sign. And the positive variance will show you that we have not met our budget, our budgeted revenue yet, but that is to be anticipated because this is the mid-year projection, the mid-year actual revenue. In the next column, then, you will have the percentage.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Automobile licenses. We're already at 100%? And it's half the year?
Let me see, that is...
It's like number four down from the top.
Number four down from the top. Licenses. What is the number on that, in the department number?
Are we talking about General Fund or Road and Bridge?
Forty-three, forty-three, I'm on Road and Bridge.
Oh.
Or you need to go, you're on General Fund.
No, I'm on General Fund.
Okay.
Can I ask you about the General Fund, then? The second one down.
Which page is that?
Page one of the General Fund.
Oh, okay.
Have we been able to identify the unidentified?
Actually, that is an ongoing process. It seems that we will get direct deposits into the, into the General Fund, and we don't know to whom they belong, and they get coded into unidentified, and during the course of the month, we will go through and review it, and once we identify it, then we will move it to where it belongs.
It's a clearing account.
Yes, right now, right now, we still have 441,000 in there. It was 1.5 million, but we have 441 pending in the right.
But that's not, yeah, just so, just so we know, that, that's not an item that we just didn't budget?
No.
You just don't know where it goes yet?
Correct.
It's gonna fall into the blank?
Yes, yes, once we, you know...
So it was really not a variance? Yeah, so we didn't get a windfall of 441,000 dollars?
No, we did not.
Okay.
We did not, all right, okay.
No, it's, I wish we had, okay.
So, we're all on the right page now?
Yes, I'm on the right page.
Sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So, you'll see the, the percentage, which basically shows where we are at right now, okay? And while I did list the detail by each line item, if you go through, you will get an overall picture as to where each department is on meeting their, their budgeted revenue. You'll see that, for example, on the first page, General Admin, department number 104090 toward the bottom of the page, is at 83% of the completion already. That is a, that type of situation is where it is right now because of the, we had a $716,000 settlement that came in that was not budgeted, so that has a tendency to, to throw off the percentages as to what they would normally be.
If we can just, because there's a lot of information here.
Yes.
If you just go highlight, because I think the, the numbers that, that I'm interested in is one, are the ones that are below 50%. And try to explain those away. Right off the bat, the ones that, that are somewhat scary is the Gateway Bridge transfer, which is at 27%. We should be at, you know, at 50% now. It shows that an even million dollar transfer has occurred. Does that mean that, that there's enough funding at the Gateway Bridge or the, the bridge system where that percentage is not accurate?
No, what it indicates right there on the bridge system, on fund, on Gateway and on the toll, on Gateway Veterans and on the Free Trade Bridge, actually, we do the transfers throughout the course of the year. What this indicates right now on the million dollars is that we have only transferred a million dollars from Gateway.
Right, I understand that.
That's accurate, but...
I understand that, but I'm, but wouldn't that number, shouldn't that number be 1.5 million?
It would ordinarily be higher, yes.
Okay, so why isn't it one, see, if it were, if it were 1.5, we'd be at 50% of the transfer.
Correct.
Of 3 million, okay?
Correct.
So, is there a reason that it's not at 1.5?
Actually, the reason it's, it's not at 1.5 is because the amount of cash flow that's available and what we have to have in reserves and what needs to be transferred out to the debt service, we don't have, sometimes we have to wait until we get those revenues in, so that is why only a million dollars has been transferred at this time, because I did not want to hit any of the reserves.
And the reason for that is because, I just didn't realize, based on your, on the last bridge system report that we got, that we were that behind.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you're looking at keeping all your debt service and your reserves and all that at a certain level, if you're unable to transfer the money, then, then we're short right now based on our budget. But the report that I believe that, that the bridge system saw, we were about even, I think, maybe a little bit behind.
We were about even, yes. And the reason that I only booked the 1 million there is because that was, like I said, essentially what was transferred. And the page that you have in front of you shows a, the actual projection for the end of the year.
It's 3 million.
Should really be 3.6 million. We budgeted 3.7 million as a transfer in, okay? Based on where the actual budget to actual as of March 31st, taking all the revenues into account up to March 31st, Gateway Bridge is at about 98% what they should be, so...
Why does it say three, though, on projected?
Yeah.
That, I did that, that was an oversight, okay? I was basing it on the 1 million dollars, okay? I, I went back and I was reviewing all of my data, and the reason you all's only says three is because I was basing it, I was basing the projection based on, I looked at it and I said, okay, if, if Gateway Bridge is at 27% of their performance right now, then they're not going to be able to meet the 3.7. They're actually going to be at X amount.
Less, exactly, well, I think that's where I'm going to in terms of why it's only 27%.
Yes.
But I think we have to look at the bridge system as a whole, because that's, that's what makes the transfer, the bridge system.
Right.
So you're talking about 5 million dollars that you have here that we budgeted, but what, four, a little under, a little under 5 million dollars that we, that we budgeted?
Yeah, if you look on, on Gateway Bridge, I had only picked it up as being able to meet 3 million dollars, and it is actually 3.694. Once I went back and I, I did the budget to actual and I picked up all of, because on Gate, on all of the bridges, the actual toll bridge deposits do not come in until after the end of the month, so all of the March transactions were not received until mid-April. So I had to go into April and book them in here also to be able to get a clear picture as to what their actual revenues were up through March 31st. So it's, it's, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
It, it's anticipated that, we budgeted 3.7 million in transfers coming in from Gateway, and based on where their income is right now, the transfer should be able to, to be at 3.694, okay? So it's gonna be like about 100,000, maybe, shortage for Gateway.
I think that the, maybe in the next 45 days, that we start working on the budget, that you show a actual to actual, this year's actual revenues compared to the last year's at that same time, just to see where we are, because what I'm looking at here, and again, I think, I mentioned this sometime, a little, not too long ago, that anticipate we're gonna be short again on, on these, on some of our monies, so just everybody starts preparing for that, we're gonna be short again.
Right, right. And, you know, I, I understand the request that you're asking for, it's, it's going to be a little bit difficult because we can't fix the cutoff date, like...
Oh, okay. Your program doesn't allow you to go like, you know, seven months, last year versus seven months this year?
Right, right.
Okay.
And we have when the revenue actually post.
Okay.
It doesn't post for them.
So you'd have to make the report after you've had the opportunity and time to post that from the previous month, even though it may be the middle of the next month or whatever.
Right, right. And, and we have, we have the county and the district clerks' reports that will come in a month later, so...
Same thing.
I can't run the report up to April 30th and ex, I have to run it up to April 30th to get March 31st figures in, and, so it's a little bit...
Well, but that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I understand, mm-hmm. So there is a posting later.
But even, even if you're current, your system can't, can't give you, you know, last year's eight months versus this year's eight months?
Yes.
You're saying, yes, it cannot, or yes...
It can, it can give us that, okay? The only reason, the, the reason that I'm saying, what I am saying is because it, we run the report by posting date, so it's not by the month that the entries are posted for, rather, it's the date that the transaction actually hits our books.
Okay.
So we're actually posting basically about a month behind all the time.
Okay, got you.
Consistently.
Consistently, yes, because we don't have real-time reporting. But, yeah, I'll, I'll try to get what I can for you. So, at any rate, the bridge transfers are, for the most part, anticipated to be able to, to comply with what we set up as the budget, what we adopted as a budget. I don't know if, if the trend is going to continue in view of the current situation, but...
Unless something happens.
Right. So, we have, you go down and you've got the County Clerk, Records Management, you have the...
Before we do that, can we go back up just real quick? And again, I'm looking at those items that are significantly below 50%. Look at the delinquent ad valorem tax, okay? Is there like a, a huge amount of money that's gonna come in at a certain period of time? Because we're 26%, we budgeted 1.9 million, we've only got 500,000, so we're significantly below that. So I'm wondering, I'm just asking, is there a specific month between now and the end of the year that...
That we get, that we collect?
That we're gonna catch up?
I've gone over that with our, with our auditor that handles that particular tech, the, the tax department, and it's, it's indicated that we will be able to, to meet what was budgeted.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Tony's here.
Yeah, he's here.
This is the, this is the delinquent, not, not the current. I think the question... On the current, he's way ahead, but...
Yeah, but the question should be more of, in comparison to last year's numbers, where are we?
Well, that's what I was asking.
That's what he's, that's what the judge is asking for.
That's what I asked, if she could produce that.
And I'll get that for them.
Yeah, but, you know, it would be easier for us to compare if we had that number and saw whether last year at this time, we were at 20%, 30% of that particular item.
One and a half percent.
One and a half percent, which is minimal.
I know that when I was, when I was preparing this data, I compared where we were last year in our, in our revenue collection as opposed to where we are now, and right now, we are at a 62% collection rate on our revenue, and last year, we were at...
In totality.
In totality, for all-inclusive, all General Fund.
And then last year?
And last year, we were at 78, 79%.
There's a difference there.
Mm-hmm. So...
What I would do is have a firm, I'll make a, a weekly report that, that we, for our next meeting, that way, everybody will know where we're at and how we're behind or who we're headed, and it comes to the firm to make it up, we now have a...
Have them, Tony, when you, when you, when you visit with them, ask them to give us a six-month report, okay? Just so we compare, and then also, but have it compared to six months of '09 and versus six months of 2010.
Especially percentages, so that we'll know.
Mm-hmm.
See if there's a trend there.
Okay, we'll, we'll set it up for...
Yeah, whenever we're ready, but we want a six-month review, okay? Thank you.
Okay, so, is there any other, on the first page that you want to review?
Yeah, how about fee reimbursement?
Uh, what...
Which is at 34%. Account 4430.
34, 4430.
Fee reven, fee revenue, maybe?
Yeah, fee revenue.
Fee revenue. Is that what you're calling it?
That's at County Clerk Administrative. The administrative department is at a 35% collection, and I would imagine that that is attributable to reduced recording of records. And you'll, you have the same effect in, on the next page, on one, on Department 104250, which is in the County Clerk Judicial, they are at 39%.
So, let me just ask you, the, on that particular account, and that's a good one to use, assuming 35% is right, is it safe to assume that they're gonna meet 70% of what we budgeted?
They...
Or do they have some kind of fluctuation or something?
They were, I, they're anticipated to end up the year at 1.2 million as opposed to 1.277.
In the projection.
In the projection.
Right, so we're gonna be short.
At 94%.
77%.
I, I have, I have forecasted them to come out at 94% completion, 94% fulfillment.
Okay.
You have, again, on General Admin, 104090, I explained why that is at 83% already.
Real quick, on the inter-local revenue?
Mm-hmm.
4060, 4305, is that, is that what the, what the, is that the 911 system?
4060, that's Emergency Management.
Yeah, is that account 4305? Yeah, 4060, 4305.
Yes, uh-huh.
Now, do they pay that in one...
No, that is, that, that's the, yeah.
So they pay some one chunk, basically?
No, no, they pay monthly.
Okay, so...
So why is it...
They're behind.
Monthly or quarterly, yeah, that's the entities.
Okay, but, okay, if that's the case, then that should be 50%.
Yeah.
And not 7%.
They have one at 7 and one is at 75%. We can research that and see why it's only at, at 3,600 right now.
They might have paid one more than the others.
Okay.
That's still projected to come in under the approved budget.
That one is predicted to come in at 5,000 dollars shortage.
The next one are the settlements.
Yes. The settlements are at overall, that was that settlement that was received, that was the first check of, that was coming in from Collins, from the firm that...
Oh, on the hurricane stuff?
On Hurricane Dolly, yes.
Gotcha.
That was the first payment that was received. I don't know how much is still out there, I don't have a report on that.
Okay.
So where does that money go?
It's...
I mean, if, if, if it were, if, if it was, yeah, but if it was a particular building or a particular project that, that had the loss, should we not be looking at replacing whatever that particular loss was with the settlement, not just throwing it in General Fund?
It's in General Fund for right now.
I think it's divided.
I, I'm not sure as to what projects it was attributable to, and...
How do we get a report?
And I don't know how that, I think that report's gonna have to come from civil because it's, it's an ongoing litigation, okay? And I don't know if the insurance or the proceeds that are gonna come in from that lawsuit, if they are going to have to be, if there's gonna be, have to be an offset to FEMA proceeds from that, I don't know how that scheme is going to...
I don't think we could double, we couldn't double claim.
No, we can't, so, but I don't...
Yeah, but, but some of the, the claims that, that are in litigation were not things that were settled through FEMA, they were all other than FEMA-related issues.
That was the tax insurance...
Right.
That we got reimbursed taxes, or we're gonna give you 100,000, these guys went in and got one.
It wasn't with FEMA.
Yeah, but we need to figure out where it should be allocated to, because there's, there's facilities that possibly have not been brought up to where they should be in repairs in regards to each claim. So we need an itemization so we'll know where, and if, and if we've already done it in-house, well, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
But if there still needs to be work done, we need to make sure and utilize it for that particular product.
I, we can get together with Civil Department and see where they are and what type of report can be given to the court at this time.
On that one, you may just want, you may just want to restrict that. Just restrict those monies for now.
Yeah, we can't just throw them into the pot.
Yeah, just, just restrict them.
Well, coded as a restricted.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the first page?
Why are we showing zero on the payphones commissions and the, and the snag bar commissions?
Payphone commissions are, snag bar commissions are at $1,500. The budget is 3,600, they're at 42%. That one, I believe, is, has only paid five months, there is one month pending in there of rental income.
Do we have payphones?
I, I thought there was some at the, at the Judicial Building.
Or the parks?
I'm not sure. Well, the parks would go into the parks revenue, into the parks budget. I'd like to point out to the court right there on the vending machine commissions right above that, we budgeted, I mean, it's a small item, right, but we budgeted 6,500 and the revenues are at 7,380, so they've exceeded already.
Did we budget that before we went out for bid?
I believe we did, yes.
So we went out for bid and now we're making more money?
Yeah.
On the, on the interest income?
Mm-hmm.
Are we waiting on that one to, is there something that's gonna mature before we get this interest income? Because that one is significantly down.
It is very, very down, and the interest income is posted up to date.
That's up, that's current?
Yes.
Okay.
But you're still projecting 200,000?
Because the, the, I'm projecting on the interest income...
No way.
200,000, that's what it says.
No, it says, but no way.
It says 200,000 on that.
No way.
Yeah, 200,000.
Just wishful thinking?
Maybe, I wouldn't know.
Or maybe there's maturities coming out?
See, you have the other, on the next page, you have the same thing. On the, on account 4,600.
On 4,250?
Yeah.
Yes, they're at 11% as well, yes.
It's the same rate, so...
You're getting a hellus.
No, actually, I just want to compare the interest on the other one because it looks like it's a, we're way, we're way over budgeted the interest income.
I will reduce it considerably from the prior year.
You don't have any coffee, so we can stay awake during this exciting time?
This is exciting.
More numbers.
CPA would say that.
Like filling prescriptions, right?
Yeah, the, on the next one, on the next page, you've got your aid to County Court at Law, 1, 2, and 3, and they have all exceeded their budget. On line item, like, for example, on the County Court at Law, account number 4,334, all of those for the three county courts have exceeded their budget, and that was unforeseeable. It's based on the amount of funding that the comptroller receives, and they distribute that as aid to the county, so...
So they got more than they...
Yes, uh-huh, we've already exceeded, then, our, our normal budget, our normal revenue that we receive is between 39 to 41, 42.5. In the Indigent Defense, in account number 104351, state revenue, 4,300 is already at 98%, and they received an allotment of, one allotment of surplus funds that, that the task force had, and that is why they have already exceeded their, their budget, or they're not, they've not exceeded it, they're at 98% of what was budgeted already. On page three, you've got basically all of the JP offices on that page, well, on page three and four, you have your JP offices, and some of those are, are low, some are where they should be, at anywhere from 43 up to 50%. The one that's at 52% there is JP Precinct 4, and JP 5-1 is at 54%.
If you go to JP 7-2, the bottom, yeah.
Mm-hmm, on page three?
Yes, okay. Is, are those reports current? Is that a six-month report?
All of these JPs are up through February 2010, so...
So it's a five-month report?
It's a five-month, and they should be, on five months, they should be at 42%.
Okay. Okay, so if you look at JP, well, pretty much JP, well, then JP 1, okay, JP 1 is at 18%, JP 7-2 is at 18%. It should be at 42?
Should be at 42.
And then JP 6 is at 23%.
JP 6 at 23.
So, looks like at least on those three, they're gonna be short.
Yes.
Assuming the same trend.
On JP 1, one of the issues may be that the best months there are March and April, and those are not booked yet.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what about 7-2, though?
7-2, I, I couldn't, I, I don't think they have a seasonal fluctuation.
Where's that, what, what court's that?
7-2 is Judge Sanchez.
It's right at the bottom.
7-1 is Judge Gonzalez, he's at 41%.
Maybe we forecast right on that court?
I'm sorry?
Right?
You said, maybe we forecasted right on that court?
You know, because the revenues were way, way off.
Way down.
That kind of makes sense, but, it kind of makes sense.
On page four, you'll see on, basically, they're at 49, 4950 is at 49%, 4750 is at 16%. I did not pick up the, the settlement that was agreed upon that's supposed to come in from Judicial Dialogue, the 40,000 dollars. I did not budget those.
You're on 4172.
I'm on 4750, yes, I'm on 104172.
Right.
We paid, we did a budget amendment to recognize that settlement money coming in. None of that has been received yet, and I have emailed the DA's office to send us a copy of the settlement agreement so I can see what the payment terms of that are.
The same thing with the 50?
The 50 is actually revenue that they receive. I, that was picked up as money coming in from the Southwest Border Prosecution Initiative. Unfortunately, that site usually runs about nine months behind, so the money that comes in would probably have to be accrued as a receivable, because the site is not open yet to even request reimbursement for any of those cases prosecuted. But it's anticipated that 50,000 would come in at a bare minimum. You've got...
Just, just a quick note, everything else is six months other than the JPs?
That is correct.
Okay.
At the very bottom of that page, on page four, you've got 104990, the Tax Office, they're at 70% collection, it's anticipated that they would, that they will meet the whole budget there. The next page is page five, and the first one that's up at the top is the jail. Jail federal reimbursement was budgeted at 3.2 million, it's projected that that will come in at 1.7, so that will create a... So that will create a sizable reduction. And that one point seven is based on what we are receiving right now per month from the feds for housing the federal inmates. So they are at thirty-eight percent of their revenue.
It's going to be short.
Thirty-eight or twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, oh, thirty-eight total.
Well, thirty-eight overall for the department.
So we're going to be short.
For the department. That one is actually at twenty-seven. Then you will, the right underneath that, you've got the collections, the revenues generation from the constables.
How come the payphone commission is so low?
Uh, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that, Commissioner. Last year, they also did not meet the budget that was budgeted to come in. It's anticipated that this year, based on this, they will probably be at a hundred and ninety thousand. And I believe that's the, I, I believe the court approved an RFP to go out for, for bids on that.
And the, the SCAP funds, your?
The SCAP funds have all come in, and they have been fully realized, the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Fully realized means fully spent, right?
No, well, they've been budgeted, they've met the budget, yes.
Yeah.
They're being used for the jail.
Right.
So that is a safe assumption, yes. Right underneath that, you will see the fee generation from all of the constables. And you've got Constable Precinct one at forty-eight percent, Constable two at eighty-three percent. Constable number two has already exceeded the fee revenue in account number forty-four-thirty. He was budgeted at twelve thousand five, and the fees have already, the fees are already at twenty thousand six ninety-nine. And I would attribute that to the civil process that is being done by the constables now. Constable three is at twenty-three percent. Constable four is at seven percent. Constable four, mental transport, while it does show that that revenue is at nine percent, that is the reimbursement, the billing that's being done to Valley Baptist, and it's anticipated that what's come in so far is only seventy-two hundred dollars, but Valley Baptist, we have a contract with them to cover the cost of that program, so all of that revenue should, should be coming in. Constable six is at seventeen percent, and Constable seven is at twenty percent. Right underneath that, you've got the Sheriff's Department. They are at forty-two percent of their budget. And that is, like, like the judge mentioned, those are all on a six-month basis. You have Boot Camp in department number one hundred, five-seven-zero-zero. On forty-three hundred, there's revenue realized of eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars. That was not budgeted, and that is revenue that comes in from the Juvenile Commission. It was not budgeted, we did not know we were receiving it. That is funding that is being, that the Juvenile Commission has, that they are paying the county at, for housing at the juvenile boot camp for, for juveniles that they have there. And I don't know if that's going to continue, if there's more coming or anything, but we do have eighty-three thousand in there that was not budgeted.
And this is the first time that they pay?
Uh, that is the, usually, we know how much they're going to pay because they send us information. This year, we did not have any information, and none of this was budgeted to come in. And it has to do with particular type of juvenile defendants that they have in their custody. It's a particular program, and if they have these juveniles in custody, then the Juvenile Commission will pay the county for housing them, and, and that is the effect of that. The next one is the Boot Camp in our local revenue. That is, they are at fifty percent, that's a pretty fixed amount, and restitution rental, that's at fifty percent as well. On the last page, which is page six of the revenue, you have the Health Department, which is at eighty-three percent. The reason, I believe the reason that that is skewed like that at eighty-three percent is the tobacco reimbursement is factored in there. The amount that will be coming in will be a hundred and forty-nine thousand. It will be thirty-one thousand dollars under what we had budgeted. We had budgeted, we had gotten a notice from the commission to reduce it by at least fifty percent, which we did, and the site is now up, and we are getting a hundred and forty-nine thousand, not a hundred and eighty thousand. So that has been booked as, since we will be receiving it very shortly. So that, that is skewing the figures to where the Health Department is now at eighty-three The environmental health is at sixty-three percent. The next department, one hundred, six-four-one-one, the Title Four E, revenue was budgeted in there at eighty-five thousand. It is anticipated that that revenue will come in. Unfortunately, that has not come in yet, it has not been billed yet because we have to wait for the, the CPS program to put up on their website the caseload percentage that the county is, can apply for, can use for billing purposes, and that will generally run about six to nine months behind. So generally, what we wind up doing is accruing the revenue. We bill for what we can, that, that we're able to bill in that fiscal year, and then we will accrue the rest of it as a receivable. Then you have your family learning centers, which are at forty percent as of this time. We had budgeted, we had adopted a budget on revenues of seventy million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and six dollars. Based on what we're seeing right now, I, I feel that the revenue at the end of the year will be at sixty-eight million six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, so we are looking at ninety-eight percent fulfillment of our budgeted revenue. I would venture to say that the bulk of that is due to the loss of federal inmate revenue. And that, that is based on the presumption that the bridges will continue to operate at the level that they are operating right now.
So it's not the number you show on the projection?
No.
Was it six-eighty-nine?
Six, yes, because I went back and I redid the one-four Gateway Bridge, yes.
So about two million short on the revenue side?
Uh, one point seven, I believe. So that is the projection. We'll continue to monitor it every month, and I'll go back and get that information on a historical year-to-year calculation for you.
Your fifteen minutes were up twenty minutes ago.
I was ready, Commissioner. You also have the, the Road and Bridge, and.
Do you all want to go over the Road and Bridge?
That's it.
That's about where it needs to be, though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty, pretty much where it needs to be, yes.
Just go to the expenditure side.
Expenditures, coming right up.
That's Javier's. I like the tag team.
Now, have you just come in with a one point seven million dollar decrease in expenditures?
That would be nice, but.
On the expenditures, what you have is the budget, the actual, the encumbrances, the remaining budget, and the percentage of the remaining budget for the rest of the fiscal year. The expenditures that are here are through April fifteenth, and the reason for that is try to get the six months, whereas utility costs and fuel costs in there because they come in, in the first part of April, and to get them paid. But what happens, you also pick up two payrolls here, one of them which belongs to March, but one of them that really belongs in April. So if you, if they have a remaining budget anywhere between forty-five and fifty percent, you know, that would be, be normal. And what kind of skews that, though, is if they have large encumbrances for contracts that's for the, for the whole year, but, you know, the remainder has yet to be paid. So if you, if you start from the top, the, the first two, which is the civil service and the county clerk, which are at thirty-five and thirty-eight percent, if you notice, the encumbrances that are there, the, the civil service has one that's for almost fifteen thousand, and the county clerks has one that's almost ninety-seven thousand dollars, so that kind of skews that. Their regular operations are where they should be. The next one that, that is less than, say, the forty-five percent would be down at the JP Administration, which is at thirty-eight point nine percent. What's paid out of there is mainly funds that are allocated for, from the JP technology and security fees, which get budgeted through the year, and of course, all the technology, well, there's two things. One of the things in the technology is the maintenance agreement for the, for the HAMR system, and the rest is for the equipment that is approved by Commissioners Court for purchase. For the maintenance agreements, we've already done two-thirds of the payments, and all the equipment, of course, has already been purchased. So as far as for, for regular operations that are paid out of there, they're, they're within where they should be. The next one that is very low is at thirty percent, which is the voter registration and elections. The reason for that is, of course, they've gone through the previous elections, and their extra help line item is way over, and that's why they only have thirty percent of their budget remaining. The ones coming down, which are having issues, are some of the, the maintenance and operation budgets. First two is Eminem O Rio Hondo, Eminem O Port Isabel, those, Rio Hondo's only, only has thirteen percent, Port Isabel only has twenty-seven percent of their budget remaining.
But wasn't that like some projects that were done there?
Well, the Rio Hondo i- is, yeah, a little bit different because we moved the, right now, there's actually two buildings being paid out of there because they haven't moved out of the old, and they're repairing the new one. So that one's a little bit skewed because of the expenditures for their, for their renovation of, of the new facility. So that one's a little bit skewed because of, of those expenditures.
Just a quick question? I'm sorry, David, go ahead. Go ahead. No, just a quick question. On the budget revenues and expenditures, why aren't they equal?
Actually, they, they should be, and what I, I didn't have a chance to talk to Martha about that, and it may be something that, that.
You mean this two-week overlap thing that you're talking about, or no? It shouldn't be.
Two-week overlap?
You're talking about?
Oh, no.
Okay.
You mean budgeted-wise?
Well, and the thing is, they're going the wrong way. In other words, you've got.
Seven?
Almost ninety thousand dollars more of expenditures than you do on the revenue side.
Right.
And those should have been zero.
Correct, they should zero out.
We adopted a balanced budget.
Correct.
Yes, that's why I'm asking, because why that's, that, like that?
Yeah, and I, I didn't have a chance to talk to her to see if maybe there was a, a department or something that I'm picking up that, that wasn't on, as far as in her report, as far as maybe some grant funding.
Can y'all get together and later find out?
It, it is balanced, it's just, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why it's not showing up that way in this report.
All right.
How about Port Isabel? What's going on over there?
Uh, Port Isabel, it's a couple of things. I know one thing was the communications line item that's being charged to there, and then another one was the utilities are running kind of high. I need, I need to get with.
Take their underground sprinklers not even working?
Electricity, not, not as far as water. Electricity. I need to get with actually the, the maintenance department to see what, what's going on there. On the jail, which is only thirty-seven percent, what's, what's skewing that is the million dollars in, in, in open purchase order. The largest of that is, is for fuel, not for fuel, for food costs, apologize, because that's the year-long contract, and it's, it's all encumbered at, at the beginning of the year. Eminem O Courthouse is at forty percent. That has to do with maintenance and repairs. A lot of their budget has, has already been, been used.
So the numbers to look at here, really, if I understood you right, anything below, let's say forty-two percent?
Right.
On the right, is something that we need to look at or be concerned about?
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm. The mental health transport's at thirty-nine, but anything that's expended there will be reimbursed by, by Valley Baptist. Five-six-zero-one, the Eminem O Sheriff's Office, there, there is an issue there that I need, I need to have maintenance look at, and that has to do with, with utilities, which is water and, and sewage and garbage there, the, the charges just seem kind of high, and I have to have them do some research into that. The next lowest, or the next one would be child welfare, six-forty-one, that thirty-eight percent. Now, that thirty percent, thirty-eight percent of their budget, and when I was looking at their, their current expenditures, if I take what they've spent for the first six months, and if they continue on the, the, the same trend that they've done for the first six months for the remainder of the fiscal year, they're going to be short, and, and the majority of that is for appointed attorneys for the child welfare cases, and so it's what's driving that. They'll be short about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars within that particular line item. Last year, their, their costs seemed to be kind of steady. For the prior two or three years, we had an issue with each year, it was increasing from one year to the next as far as the cost for the appointed attorneys. Now, it's, it's not that they're, they're large amounts, it's because each one of the payments is like a hundred or two hundred dollars, but for each individual that they're appointed to. Several years back, they changed the statute to where each individual had to have an appointed, an attorney appointed to them, each child, and then sometimes also the, the parents were appointed attorneys. But that's one that we're going to have to pay close attention to. I mean, there's nothing really we can do to control it because they have to appoint the attorneys for these cases. It's just something that we're going to have to factor into next year's budget. The only other thing that's, that's out there, of course, is the, the costs for, that are coming through periodically for the, geez, my mind is blank, for the capital murder cases. Those costs are still out there, and there's, they're still coming through that we're going to have to find funding for, to, to pay for. We did have funds reserved, so we'll actually have to start budgeting that or allocating those funds to cover those expenditures.
Javier, on mental health, transport, you often have, or consistently refer to Valley Baptist payments coming in?
Correct.
What about the other facilities? I mean, we transport other than simply Valley Baptist.
The.
Expenses in here?
The, the contract that we have with Valley Baptist was to pay for the, the individuals for the fuel-related costs and for, for overtime.
Right.
Now, if they're picking up at, at other facilities, I, I haven't seen the actual reports that they, you know, submit. I know they track where they pick up and where they drop off. I would imagine when we invoice Valley Baptist, you know, they're, they're reviewing that, or we're only billing them for pickups and drop-offs that are being at their facilities. But I haven't seen the, the reports that are being submitted, so I, I'm not sure.
I, I've seen some reports which does indicate exactly what you're saying. The other facilities that they're picking up from. So did we, did we only budget for exactly what Valley Baptist is?
Well, when the, when the agreement was entered into, it was, I think, for a, there was a fixed portion, I guess Martha could answer, but there, I know there was a fixed portion, and then there was a plus overtime cost. As far as to the.
The overtime cost, we are, as it is, speeding hurt. The overtime, if I got this, only covered Saturday, Sunday, overtime.
At Valley Baptist facilities.
Any other questions on the expenditure side? Anything else, Javier?
On the Road and Bridge side, they, they appear to be doing okay, other than they're out of money for road materials, but, other than that.
Other than what?
Out of funds for road materials.
Standard operating procedure over a year.
Yeah, nothing new.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Martin Javier's fiscal year budget review?
Some of.
By Commissioner Gatzas, second by Commissioner Puma, any further discussion? All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed, I'm carried, I'm b. Discussion possible action regarding the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget preparation? And you will get back to us on that discrepancy, right?
Yes. We're getting ready to send out the budget packets to all of the departments so they can submit to us their budget, so we can start working on it. Last year, we started working on it like around the second week of April, sending out the packets, and we wanted to get some guidance from the court. I know last year, we came. I know last year, we came to the court as well, and we indicated to the court if there was any particular guidance that they wanted to issue, that we could relate to the departments. It's anticipated that this year, we will probably not realize too much, if any, increased tax revenue. We also, I, I had thought that we needed to shift the penny back on the tax rate back to the road and bridge as well. We have some tentative cost on the, the operating costs that are going to be needed for the, for the jail expansion, for the new facility, the three hundred and sixty-some-odd beds that are being built. We do not have a concrete figure on that yet, but it's anticipated that we will probably be in as tight a situation as we were last year when we were working on the budget. So we would like to ask the court if there's any particular direction that they would like for us to give to the departments, any particular guidance that they would like to give. It will not be an easy budget this year. It's anticipated being just as difficult.
I think that's an important, an important message that has to be passed on to them, that this is, this is going to be a tough budget, and, and they need to look very carefully at, at putting their budget together and what is, I mean, there's no luxury possibility, and, and if we see that, I think I can speak for the rest of the court, if we see that there's any fluff there, we'll do something about it. They have to help us. We need their help.
Yes. Commissioner?
Oh, no, there's... Any comment?
No, no comments.
The right side.
When you give us the balanced budget numbers...
Mm-hmm.
Can you also provide for us your projected percentage under run on revenues? On just your projected, okay?
For 2011?
No, no.
Oh, for 2010?
For the current budget.
About two percent?
It's about 1.7 million.
Well, just put it on paper for me.
Okay.
When you...
We'll, we'll send that out to you.
Yeah, send it out, when you give us the, the balance numbers, and just make, you know, give us a projected percentage written, and that way, I think that would better give us an idea of what we need to look at.
Okay.
Minimally.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We will get the packets out to the departments, along with recommendations that they keep in mind that we will be facing the same situation, if not a little bit, you know, worse than we were in last year, and look to them to make recommendations and see what they can come up with.
That's, that's the only direction the court wants to give the auditor?
Do those packets have to go out?
Do they have to go out to the departments?
Do they have to go out within the next two weeks?
We need to start working on them, yes.
I know, but do they need, you need them, I mean, they can't wait for our subsequent two-week meeting so that we can...
I, I would prefer to send them out at, at this time, and that way, we can start, the departments can start working and reviewing and see what we're going to be getting back from the departments.
Well, then, I think we need to suggest that they do a little bit of trimming.
Well, suggest, suggest something.
You know, we've got to, you know, you, it's not going to appear from nowhere. The revenues are disappearing, they're not appearing. We don't anticipate...
An increased revenue?
Substantial tax increase revenues.
No, or toll revenue for that matter.
Or grid system revenues, or I can see about the only place that we might be looking at some increase is with the increased number of beds that we're putting in, maybe the number of federal inmates would go back to what they used to be, maybe?
I, I don't think the, the increased revenue due to the anticipated increased federal inmates will offset the cost of running the, the new three hundred and sixty-five beds are going to be short.
That's what I was going to add. I don't, I don't think it'll even...
I didn't anticipate it covering the cost, I anticipated revenues, so. I mean, the costs are going to be there whether we have revenues or not.
Well, but we're, I agree, but we're going to have increased cost of running...
Right.
The beds.
The cost of running that facility will be there regardless of what kind of prisoner you put in it. If you put prisoners in there that are federal revenues, they will at least bring in some revenue.
That's correct, some of that cost.
So it would be nice to know what the cost for the operation might be in regards to...
We've been working with the Sheriff's Department on that, and we have some tentative numbers. We continue to work with them. We have a pretty clear picture of what the operations are going to be, but we do not have a, a clear-cut picture on what the, the personnel cost will be at this point.
Okay. And we, we might need to look at also at, at whether the intent of housing an extra hundred prisoners, federal, federal prisoners, or a hundred and fifty, or whatever it might be, you know, and consider that as an option to offset some of the operating costs.
Right.
What if, and this is food for thought, do you think we should go ahead and, and give them an idea of a percentage of, that they need to trim? I mean, we, we need to be blunt about it because it's, it's not going to go away.
It's, it's, if, if...
In order...
Go ahead.
In, in order to, to be able to come up with a budget that, that, that we can live with, and, and it's going to be tough, so should, should we not give them an idea how much they need to, to trim?
Judge, do you, at the last time that we met with the, the auditing firm, you had suggested possibly about two and a half percent?
Yeah.
To possibly be able to meet...
But two and a half percent is, is about 1.5 million, and if, roughly, maybe off a little bit, but I think about two percent, two and a half, maybe about two million bucks. And if, if she's sugge, I mean, she's already mentioned about, and I don't think we're going to be able to do that, ship the penny back from General to, to Road and Bridge. Had we, had we not, had we eliminated that one penny last year, the additional penny, you know, that y'all wanted to do, then they wouldn't have had any money for Road and Bridge operations. They're already out now as it is.
Right.
They're already out.
And I just don't see how, as much as I'd like to, I just don't see how we're going to be able to shift the penny back from General Fund back to Road and Bridge. I just don't, I just don't know how we're going to do it without flipping it over here.
And that was my argument, because historically, I've been here going on ten years, and we raid the Road and Bridge Fund, and, and we, we say, okay, we're going to borrow it for this year, but we'll put it back next year, and guess what?
We never did.
Next year comes around, and it's gone. And we're going to borrow a penny, but the next year comes around and we fight for it, and we do all we can, and we get a quarter of a penny. And last year, lost a penny, and now we're coming back, and you're saying we can't even do...
Can't do it.
Half of that penny back.
I, I don't think it's practical to do it.
The only ones that get hurt are the projects that we have in the rural communities that most need that service.
Yeah. That's why, that's why I don't, that's why I just don't think that you're going to be able to do that.
I, I know that was the original intention, but it's, it's not going to be, I don't think it'll be feasible at this point.
I don't, I don't see appraised values going up...
No.
More than a couple of percentage points. You know, I just don't know. I, I think that at this point, that's why I think we need to get started early, you know, to go down, and this time, you know, I'm, I'm going to, I want to want, I mean, viable written recommendations to what we're going to do to balance the budget. Because I think it's going to be probably as bad as it was last time, talking about three to five million dollar budget difference. I think the message that we send out to everyone is, is start off at five percent cut, you know, start off with that. Five percent cut's about three and a half million dollars. If we get it, if we get it down to a million, maybe we can, we can manage it. I, I think that Mike Forbes, I don't know if he's here or not, but Mike did a, Mike did a, you know, when we talked about going to the vendors, you know, we did that, went to the vendors, and they came up with some, you know, some good chunk of savings that, and just go back to them.
Those appear to be on target.
Yeah. I mean, they, hundreds of thousands of dollars that, that by just going to the vendor and asking them, you know, to, you know, to do that. But I also asked Carlos Barera when he was with that to, you know, so it doesn't appear like it's the world trying to do something, hey, you don't have to come, our independent auditor, tell us, hey, just what do you think we can do? What do you think we can cut? What do you think we can, we can do that? I have a pretty good idea, but I want somebody with an independent accounting firm to come in and, and suggest that, so it's not coming from the auditor or the budget officer. Have somebody independent come in and, and make some recommendations to us. Don't even have to take them, but at least the audience, the public will hear, this is what we're, this is what we're faced with.
That was the other thing I was going to say, Judge. I think it's important that, that you have interviews or whatever, to make the public aware of the situation, because, and I don't blame the people that, that call in, and I'm getting back to, to our, our running out of money for, for maintenance of roads, and, and we're getting calls constantly, and I know that the need is there, and we don't have the money. And so I think, I think it's important that the public be aware of, of our situation.
Well, we don't have it because we took it away. Because if we would have had that extra penny, that'd have been a million more dollars.
1.3 million.
But we've always consistently come up short before the end of the year. That happens.
With road materials.
Yeah, but this year, I'll, I'll give you an example, you know, the number of projects we've done is less than fifty percent of whatever had been done in the last few years before that, as far as actual miles paid in my precinct. I don't know about the other precincts.
It's, it's the same with all of us, and, and there's, and, and I, I feel for the constituents because they have a need and, and they get upset, and that's why I think it's going to be important that they better understand, I mean, we need to let the public know there's more of the same coming down the pipe. There's a, it's going to be tough, it's going to be real tough.
If it weren't for the Colonia projects...
That's right.
You know, we would be in bad shape.
That's going to run out.
It's, it's running out. We're like at the tail end.
Hopefully, fairly soon, we start getting some of the money that comes in from the Dolly damage, and we can have work there to repair a lot of the roads that are in sad shape. The environmental's done and everything else.
Okay. Do I hear anything else? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge...
Well, do we need to go with the five percent?
Are we sending out requesting the danger?
Well, you know, whatever y'all want to do, we read, made recommendations last year, and I think most of the departments came through with, with what we asked, and it was a cooperative effort. We had to raise a tax rate by a penny. Hope we don't have to do that again, but I'm going to defer to you all. You all come up with suggestions. You know, I did that last year, and, you know, I want to hear from somebody else other than, other than me.
I think we need to go with a five percent.
We've got to suggest something to the folks, otherwise...
You can't just, you can't just, we have to be specific, because just telling them, help us, you know, trim, trim your expenditures isn't, isn't going to do it. We need to give them a, a figure. I support the five percent. I, I think it's going to take that.
We, we ask for their support.
Does the court want to take the directive that, that no new positions would be funded at this time? I, I don't see how we can fund new positions.
I think that's a given. I think you have a, you have a freeze. That's my, that's my personal thought.
I don't think we're going to change that, so. The freeze is there, and I think we probably need to keep it there. And we need to continue to look at the positions that have not been filled. You know, we had a four-month window to fill them. If they weren't filled, perhaps they're really not needed.
Okay, so the directive...
They get along without them some way, you know. I know it means some people working more than what they may have been before.
I understand.
It's a help.
So the directive of the court is to request departments initiate a, a five percent cut, and the hiring freeze is in effect? Is, is that the directive?
To start off.
I support that, to begin with.
I think so.
To get the process going.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tomay. Second by Commissioner Gatzas. Any favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries? Before we start the next meeting, let's take about a five-minute break. Everybody will take a break. We'll come back in about five minutes. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, April the 29th, 2010. It is now a little after 5:12. As we do all meetings, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag, followed by a moment of silence. Pete, you want to join, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If y'all could remain standing for a moment of silence, and let us remember, Constable Robert Lopez's mother passed away recently. If you could just keep him and his family and your thoughts and prayers. If there's no objection from the court, let me take one item out of order. Some folks need to get on the road. Item 5D, consideration approval of awarding of bid to W.T. Bieler for the Almito expansion project. Pete?
Judge, Commissioners, we sent out backup information for this agenda item. Back on April the 1st, we opened bids for this project and received four bids. On the 12th of April, I sent a written recommendation to the Texas Department of Transportation, and then on the 27th of April, we received written concurrence from the Texas Department of Transportation, and a recommendation from staff is to award the bid for the Almito switch-out expansion to W.T. Bieler Company with a low bid amount of 10 million, 237,377 dollars and 60 cents.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gatzas, second by Commissioner Tomay. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries?
The only discussion, Judge, that I would like to make at this, after we've all approved it, is that I want to thank Pete and David and the rest of the staff that has diligently worked on this project in making sure that we, that we salvaged the low bid. I think that they've gone above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that we did not lose this stimulus funds that are being, to some extent, in some ways, or not necessarily stimulus, but some of the funds, federal funds that we are being used for this project, even to the point of reducing the bid by 650,000 dollars because of errors that were made by the bidder in our favor. So, you know, we, we are coming out way ahead of the game. The city of Harlingen, most importantly, is going to be relieved of about eighty percent downtime congestion, downtown congestion in a number of at-grade crossings. It's going to improve their air quality, it's going to prove, improve their wait times or decrease their wait times at these crossings, and the switching will be moved to Almito. It's just a great project for the city of Harlingen, and I want to thank Pete and David and everyone else, you and the rest of the commission, for all the efforts that have been put into getting this done.
And this is just an example of how long it takes to get something done, because they were working on it before I took office, and, and it's been a consistent effort. So there's been past commissioners and mayor in Harlingen that worked on it. The present mayor, of course, has been extremely involved, as well as his staff, so it has been a united effort, and it's a tremendous thing for, for Harlingen and, and the surrounding communities.
Well, I'll tell you what, and I'm glad you mentioned air quality, because for, for those of y'all who have not heard, Brownsville and Harlingen were named two of the cleanest cities in Texas in terms of air quality. Just came out April the 28th, and so that's, that's another favorable comment that you made, Commissioner, regarding the air quality, so congratulations to, to you and Pete and everybody that worked on this project for so hard, for so, so long time.
And I'd just like to comment that even though all four of the bidders were out-of-valley bidders, a, a lot of the work is being done by local subcontractors. I know I had a conversation with a couple of them earlier this week, and they were really glad to see that it looked like at that time that this company was going to get the bid based on... on the numbers and they had, had some subcontract work with them, some from here in Brownsville and some from Harlingen and some from along Military Highway.
And I guess, yeah, and I failed to mention, I, I think Richard Riding just walked in, he's here also, he'd been also an integral part of this process for us, so I, I appreciate HNTB and of course your efforts, Richard. But I know that this project sat on the shelf for many years, as you said Commissioner Tamayo and, you know, it's been, it's, this is phase one, we know, of a project that is gonna be much more extensive in the future, but phase one will relieve the majority of the problems for that community and that is great, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already approved it. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, by Commissioner Gossel, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Although there's four items on the agenda listed to discuss in the executive session, three of them will be tabled and will not be discussed, item A, C, and D, we will, so we will discuss one item, confirm Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning auditing issues in the administration operation of the Justice of Peace Offices pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Do I hear motion to come out of executive session? By Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Wood, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item B, confirm Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning auditing issues. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of our auditor and proceed on the terms and conditions as discussed?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Saying by Commissioner Wood, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Public comments, I have one public comment from Corina Robertson.
I, I have so many issues to bring before you, but we have a political party to get to. My biggest concern recently has been with the Elections Office and the Elections Administrator. I was designated by Ernest De Leon during his campaign to be there when the votes were being brought in at the Cameron County Courthouse. Previous to this, I had gone to my precinct convention meeting, which is Precinct 9, which is Antias Putinet, downtown Brownsville. I went there, I was the only person there. Inohosa, Gilberto Inohosa is also in that precinct, but he didn't bother to show up even though he's Democratic chairman. And so I'm standing there by myself and I'm giving the precinct list, which as you know, under the Texas Election Code is how things work out, whoever shows up at the meeting gets to run the meeting, that's the Democratic small D process. So I get the thing and I'm standing there with a janitor and, you know, Washington Park is not exactly the best place in the world to be at night, so I leave and I proceed to go to the courthouse where the election returns are being held and as most of you know, I ran the Democratic Party for 12 years, even though Dale claimed to be chairman, it was me who did it because he, he worked during the day and same thing with Becky Costilla. So I can tell you with great authority that I'm very familiar with the Texas Election Code and I went to law school, so I know something about this. I'm standing there as a duly appointed representative of Ernest De Leon and Jared Gilbertos Minyan screams there, what are you doing with that precinct list? Number one, I really do not wanna be yelled at by anybody while I'm at the courthouse, nor should I be yelled at. I was there duly elected to do what I needed to do and he threw a fit, as Jared does every day, at the Elections Administrator's job during elections. This behavior is just out of control. Of all the offices in the county, and I know a lot of them are mismanaged, we read about it every day, what people need to do is get to work, have their employees show up for work, and we all need to be accountable. I think that when I see people that are supposed to be working during county time, I think that I, there should be someone that I should call about this because this happens all the time. And you know, I live in Washington DC, I moved back there in 1993, but unfortunately because of the terrible judges in this county, I, my divorce has been dragged out for 14 years and I've already been here before you on the issue of taxes and the fact that the previous tax assessor collector allowed Dale Robertson to get away with 25 years of not paying taxes. And I'm not even gonna approach that because you can read the minutes about that complaint, but I am very upset as a taxpayer, when I go places at 4 o'clock and there's sheriff's deputies drinking and this is a restaurant, I'm very upset when there are other county employees out for three hours having lunch, because I'm sitting there myself, but I work for myself, so I can sit there as long as I want and I think there has got to be something done about accountability. You all are talking about budget cuts, you know what, everybody needs to get to work, that's one way to cut the budget, right there. And if they're not working, they need to be released. But this thing about Roger Ortiz being totally out of control and being led around by the nose by Gilberto Inohosa has to stop. Then I go because Barney Anderson and myself have the precinct meeting at there and after Roger, excuse me, after Jared throws his fit and tries to embarrass me, I'm getting a little tired of that. Number two, Roger Ortiz does nothing about it, he just stands there, to, you know, clueless as usual. Then I go to my Democratic convention because I am elected a precinct chairman, I walk in and up comes someone, a constable named Pete Avila, who I've never met before, I don't know who this man is, and tells me that I can't be there. And I said, with what great authority do you say that to me? At first I thought it was a joke, he says Gilberto Inohosa told me to arrest you, I said, excuse me? I said, just a minute, let me call Carlos Coscos, because I happen to have his cellphone number, because Carlos's office is next door to mine in the historical district. And so, and since we're constantly being terrorized by unknown people in our neighborhood, only Carlos and I, then, you know, I call him and people are breaking into his house, et cetera, et cetera. And then Gilberto Inohosa stands up there and, and so I have a meeting and I ask them, I say to them, you can't do that, I'm duly elected, it's against the Texas Election Code, you know, and I hate to have to come down here and give lectures all the time, but apparently somebody needs to inform people, especially county employees. And as I've informed Gilberto, in front of Bill White before, Gilberto, you didn't get the memo, the, the people in Cameron County did not reelect you, we have a judge, his name is, and thank God, a working, intelligent judge who knows what he's doing. And the reason I know that, because his office is next to mine and Carlos is one of the hard work, hardest working employees, I know, and I'm not here to give a political speech, but I'm here to tell you with great authority that this has got to stop in the courthouse. That courthouse is a circus, that's just one issue of that. And number two, when a constable is told by a former county judge who has no authority, and what he said to me, comes Remy Garza and Jared Gilbertos Minyan's and they say to me, Carlos Coscos has no jurisdiction here. I said, really? I said, I guess you all are delusional that you are no longer in power here. This is starting to be obnoxious, it's arrogant, it's terroristic, and this needs to be stopped.
What, what, excuse me, just, what date did this happen, was that the election day or the runoff day?
When was the Democratic convention? It was held at Pace High School, but I don't know the date, well, John was there, John was there.
The convention days, Republican Party had theirs the same day, it was Saturday, I don't remember.
It was Saturday and.
Oh, so this had not happened at Putinet School, this happened?
Well, these are just successive, this is just examples of what county peop, employees are doing, or being asked to do. And I was at the convention and John was there with, with my friend Virginia Voltaia Wood and John, you know, John, I have nothing against you or anything like that, but you just stood there and watched it, you know, and you claim to wanna be a full-time judge, I wish you'd be a full-time gentleman because I think when terrorist.
Let's kinda get back to the.
Well, when, when something's being done wrong there and you, you are morally responsible when you allow Gilberto Inohosa to continue his terroristic activity in this county, and I would ask you to please do the job that you're supposed to do and, and, and stop being so concerned about these Democratic attorneys and, because there's a lot of problems with attorneys here and judges and we're gonna all read about it very soon, but the fact that you allowed Dale Robertson to represent indigence with the District Attorney's Office while he owes the county taxes, he not only owes the county taxes, the city taxes, the IRS taxes, and this has got to stop, you all need to get control of that courthouse when the tax sales are being held, every first Monday of the week. And I've gone to the sheriff's deputy, to the sheriff's deputy there, Mario, and said to him, this man is not supposed to be bidding on properties, that's a state law that Tony Zegiri enforces daily, however, he gets his alter ego, and I say the word alter ego because it is a legal term that the IRS has designated to Dale Robertson, Melissa Avalos, and Enrique Perez. So for the love of God, can somebody please be in charge of the courthouse and can somebody step up and make sure that the laws are enforced, that people are not, are not trying to be terrorized and that people are not arrested for going to convention where they have been legally elected to represent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just wanna follow up on the, what you mentioned about the ad-baron taxes and people doing business with the county, we passed a policy back in March of 07, was it 07? March of 07 about actually looking at, at people that do business with the county, but we, it was aimed more to vendors. What I've asked within the last, I don't know, couple of weeks or three weeks was to extend that over to look at all contracts that we rented into with, with different people for professional services, because I think the policy is that broad. And they're working on that now, so we can pile the list, we're gonna send it over to Rick, he knows about it already and he's gonna start going back and looking at all the, whomever they are, professional services that were provided either through special prosecutors or auditors, whoever it is, and see if they're current. And if they are current, then that's, I mean, if they're current, then there's no patent, if they are delinquent, then, then we'll bring it back and see what, what the court decides to do, but I think it gives us the, the parameters to not do business with them because, you know, we're paying them, you know, taxpayers good money and they need to reciprocate and pay their, their taxes well.
Right, correct, and then the fact that he's in the DA's office for the last two weeks and I think we all know what indictments are coming down the pipeline.
Let's not speculate.
Okay, but what I'm saying is this man owes the county taxes, he's being hired by Ramondo Villalobos and he's allowed to, I know he can, he can purchase bank foreclosures, but he's not supposed to be there bidding on county and he doesn't, but he does it on the telephone using his alter ego. So can somebody please be in charge and stop the circus at the courthouse?
Thank you Corina. Is there any other public comment from someone that could not sign up or did not sign up? Okay. Consent items, 4A through Triple H, please review, any item any member of the court wishes to take out and discuss separately. I've been asked to table item A, G, H, U, and then to take out, to discuss separately, item D. U, did you say? Yes. Item E, and that's all that I have.
Judge, can we also pull out double C?
For discussion or to table?
For discussion.
Item double C to take out, to, for discuss separately, any other items? I know that Mr. Goodman is here, right? For item E?
We don't need any discussion, right? We just need it approved.
It's on the consent part, so you're, you're okay with that?
Okay.
Senator, we both.
K? Judge? Item K to take out?
O. I just have a question.
Okay, item O, okay.
CC. Yes, that one was already pulled out.
That one we'll take out.
That's it.
Okay, hearing none in sentencing room, do I hear a motion to approve all the items except those that I've identified to table or take out to discuss separately?
So moved.
Second. Move by Commissioner Tamayo, move by Commissioner, move by Commissioner Gossel, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. First item to take out and discuss separately. Thank you Peter. Item D, consideration approval interlocal agreement between Cameron County and the Secretary of State Colonia Initiatives Program.
Judge, I asked you if you could pull that out, the, I spoke with Mr. Stanton and the state is asking the court to take out the insurance provision and so I told him I would put that before you and if you wanted to do that.
What's your recommendation?
We always have this, this is a standard clause in all our agreements, however, this is just for office space, they're gonna be putting an employee in the Department of Transportation.
You okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, do I hear motion to approve by Commissioner Gossel, saying by Commissioner Wood, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item E, consideration authorization to approve license agreement with, what was that word again? We just want a correction, right?
Yeah, we need, we need to correct that, it should read Airborne Productions Inc.
Instead of Redrum?
Right.
Any problem with that legal, changing?
No, there's not because there's enough notice.
Move by Commissioner, I was gonna say Commissioner Garcia, move by Commissioner Gossel, say by Commissioner Tamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item K, consideration approval of letter to, to employees as it impacts Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. Or not a question necessarily, but a comment. This is, and I think Manuela, you should tell us what this is about because I think it's important, people hear rhetoric about this issue and get all concerned and excited and if you could just kinda give us a brief overview on what this means, I think it'd be appreciated publicly.
In, in the healthcare reform, there are timelines that the employers are supposed to comply with. There are some items that supposedly when the media said or the president said that some came up about immediately, well, they don't, they have a certain six months to adjust their health plans and, and we fall in that category. We have, one item is that we extend the dependent children up to age 26, our plan says 25. Well, we can do that, but when our plan goes into effect in October 1. Pre-existing conditions, we have a, through HIPAA, an opt-out of pre-existing condition, we take people with pre-existing conditions, but they can't file a claim on that pre-existing condition for 12 months. So this is something that, that needs to be adjusted, we're waiting for HIPAA to tell us if we're still gonna be allowed to opt-out since we are a government entity or not, but, but in the interim, we still allow six months to adjust our plan. The other one that we have in, in there is the early retirees, we insure our early retirees up to age 65 and then they have Medicare. So we already have that in place, so we're, we're letting them know that, that, that this healthcare reform is nothing for them to get excited, that it's not gonna take any way, anything away from them, the health plan is still the same. Okay, there are some things that we're gonna be able to collect from the government because we have some things in place that we're allowed to, if they, if they go on, on pre-existing conditions, if they go beyond a certain amount of $15,000 I think or, on, on American, Medixon or anything, we can file a, a claim to the government, they're gonna have so many billion dollars, we're gonna be able to get reimbursed on some of these things. And, and there's, there's another one, let me look in there. There's, there's several items that people are calling my office and wanting to talk to me of course, and they wanna know if these things happen right away because they heard it said in, in effect immediately, well, they're not in effect immediately, they, we have a time to adjust. So we're just advising the employee that they're not gonna lose anything with this new healthcare reform, that, that their plan is gonna stay as is and that, and that in open enrollment, we'll advise them of any changes, meaning thing, we have to eliminate the cap, we have a million dollar cap right now, lifetime, that's gonna have to go away. So, but in the meantime, it's, I don't. So, but in the meantime, it's, I don't think anybody's gonna have, spend a million dollars between now and October 1. But in the meantime, our plan stays the same until October 1. We will be doing a lot of this during open enrollment in September. We also have the CHIPS program, we're supposed to advise all the employees that it's available to them, so that they can cover their kids. We have a lot of single employees that are paying into our health plan to cover their kids, and with the CHIPS program, it's a lot cheaper. And some of them don't even have to pay anything. And so it is at this time that we'll advise them that they can take their kids out, because right now they're probably on a cafeteria plan, and so they can't take anything out of the, because it's an IRS issue. But we'll be able to do it during open enrollment. And this is, this is what this letter is all about. And that's why we need to send this message to them, so that they can understand that we are covering the basis for the healthcare reform. And some of these things don't go into effect until 2014.
And no one is losing any benefit.
No. On the contrary, in the future, they will be gaining some. Yes.
And they're asking questions, you know, they want answers, so I'm glad that you're doing this.
Yes, and this is why, this is why I asked Ken Wethy and I, and he did a lot of research for me on this, and I had, I had pulled out the act out of the internet right away, because SHRM, the Society for Human Resources, let me know that it was online, and I could get it. So I got it, and I started going over it, and then I called Ken, and we started comparing, and he has some experts that he deals with, and so he gave us feedback. And we, we put this letter together, so that we can kinda give the employees peace of mind.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Second by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank you, Manuela. Item G, no, item O, consideration possible approval of deed conveying county-owned property to the Aurora City Volunteer Fire Department pursuant to Code Section 263.053. You want to pull that one?
Yeah, I wanted to pull that. Was that part of the agreement initially?
No, but the way this came about, and I'm glad you pulled it out, for one, I wanna thank John Hoyland and his son for being here representing the Aurora City Volunteer Fire Department. But what brought this about is that they started, and I'm proud of them, because they've done so much out there in getting equipment and trucks, you're up to how many trucks now? Five, on their own, with fundraising and so on, so I'm very proud of them. They started looking, Commissioner, at grants that are available for them, and they had to have this in place before they could apply for grants. In the initial contract, and legal can take it up after I finish, it said to provide a fire department for Aurora City. So as long as we stay in those perimeters, it's all right. And all we're, what we're doing this for is in order to help the volunteer fire department get those grants. And Delga, do you want to expand on that?
In the initial conveyance by the original owners of the land, they put in that, you know, we build a fire station, and we had done that. They gave us, I think, about two acres of land. We did not use all of the land for the fire station that was built. The volunteer, the Royal City Volunteer Fire Department, in order for them to get the grants that they want, they need to own the property. And this specific section allows the county to convey property if the, if the reason the property's going to be used will serve a county purpose. And so the deed that I prepared specifically says that the consideration is that they will build a fire station and provide fire prevention services to the residents in the area known as Aurora City and in the unincorporated areas.
And we've already done that.
And it further states that they have to build, if they don't build the fire station, within five years, the land reverts back to the county. And if they don't maintain it, once it's built, if they don't maintain it as a fire station for a continuous period of five years, then it reverts back to the county.
And the reason this came about, that they have expanded, and quite frankly, I'm an extremely optimistic person, but even I have been amazed at what they've been able to do. They have this new equipment that they got, and the fire station that the county built cannot accommodate all the trucks that they have and their equipment. And in other words, they've outgrown what we have for them. They're not asking for any money, those grants, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, the grants that they're looking at, if they have any matching funds or anything, they are going to be doing the fundraising, which they already are. So the county will, they will not be asking the county for any money. But that's the need for the expansion. The fact that they have been able to do so much on their own and have acquired those five trucks plus.
So then all we're conveying is the property next to the fire station?
Yes.
Correct. We're conveying, I think, a little less than an acre.
Nine point, nine point?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's the initial, initial plot that was given to us, and we just have, it's just sitting there, and.
The area where the property, where the existing fire station is, is still county property and will remain county property.
So it's just the area, and it's stated.
So legally, there's no issues with.
No, sir.
With carrying it surplus and donating it to them?
No, sir, and I followed it up with our consultant.
Delga, do you approve? Second.
By Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd suggest is there's a spelling error here, it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you, John.
CC. Item double C, consideration approval to add to evaluation committee for American, A, American Reinvestment Recovery Act grants, consultant RFQ 100309.
Yes, sir. Any question that we add on energy, we consulted Mr. Marco Arredondo. Proceding is requesting that.
Okay.
So move.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Second by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garcia, discussion.
We're adding a non-county employee?
Say that again, sir.
We're adding a non-county.
I believe he is a non-county employee, yes.
To the evaluation committee.
Yes, sir.
I have a concern with that, because, you know, if you add a non-county employee to an evaluation committee, that individual could be skewed to a particular entity and might possibly bring others that don't get appointed to that committee maybe an idea or a perception that we are favorable in a particular company?
If the court would like to entertain this option, maybe what we could do is just have him as a liaison, but not an actual scoring evaluator. And one of the reasons we'd like him to assist is because he's an electrical engineer.
Well, I know his expertise, but I would, I mean, I would not have a problem with having him as a.
Advisor.
Advisor to the committee or something like that. Not an evaluator.
Okay.
Do you want the motion then?
Okay, look, was the motion on the table? Do you want to revise your motion?
I'll revise the motion.
Okay, who made the motion to make him only as an advisor, second by Commissioner Garcia? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Personally, I think he does a great job.
I can need him there.
5A, budget amendments, one on transfers under salary schedules.
Judge, Commissioner, you have a budget amendments in front of you. The first one, the first one you should have is to realize a grant funding for the border security equipment project. That's an increase of $503,866 for the sheriff's office.
Is that for any particular type of equipment? I mean, is there any?
It is.
Overtime only?
Overtime only, it covers the fringe, and it covers fuel cost only and purchases some mobile phones, and that is all it covers.
So this doesn't cover any automobiles? It doesn't cover any?
No, this is only for overtime funding, and it only covers fuel cost at the net county That is the way the grant was awarded.
So it's overtime, basically?
Overtime strictly.
I was looking for money for computers.
The next budget amendments are budget neutral, they are basically transfers between departments, basically between line items within the departments. They are all pretty, pretty minimal. I think the biggest one in there that you will see is on page two, that is for the jail division. We are, we had put lab salaries into budgeted line item, we had created a budget for that of vacancy savings, and we had swept lab salaries and put it in that line item to reserve for shipping of, for the expenses to be incurred in shipping out the stadium needs, and we are increasing contractual expense for the sheriff's, for the sheriff's department for the jail, for the housing units. That's $100,000 being used right there, being budgeted in the required line item. There is a salary schedule for the DA's office in 900, in the Drug Propagated Fund. That is, they are moving budgeted, approved salaries within budgeted slots already. For your approval.
Any questions? One motion to approve by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Approval of county claims?
I have payroll dated April 30th, $1,699,693.99. ACH payments for health claims of $139,711.97. Warrants number 237183 through 237599. Warrants voided are warrants number 237414 and 2373599, for your approval. I would like to call your attention to one particular claims register, and that is the claims register that is dated April the 23rd for contract payments that the county has in place. Those contract payments total generally each month about $158,000. On this particular month, they totaled $158,227.33. I'm sorry, $153. And those are contract obligations that the county has for existing contracts. Those contracts generally come payable at the end of the month, and there are a few contracts that are payable at the beginning of the month. And based on how Commissioner's Court is scheduling the meetings every two weeks, sometimes these contract payments have been approved in advance. For example, they get approved like a week or two weeks in advance, because Commissioner's Court is not meeting at the last week of that month. So my recommendation to the court is that we are going to have one run done only for the contracts, and if Commissioner's Court is not meeting on the last day or next to the last day of that month, we will have them approved in advance for release prior to the last day of the month. And that way, they're already approved, but the court is approving them early to be released like on the last day of that month. And that way, all of the contracts get paid on the last day of the month.
At the same.
Or at the same time during the month. For your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve claims by Commissioner Garcia? Second.
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Approval of minutes for April the 15th?
I need to, I'm abstaining on 237336.
On the claim?
Of the claims.
Approval of minutes, April the 15th, 2010, special meeting, April 15th, 2010, regular meeting. Are those ready for approval?
Yes.
Motion for. By Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, any discussion? Are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. We've already done item D. Item E, consideration action regarding allocating the funds for expenses for the Cameron County DA's office to prosecute a capital murder case out of county.
Judge, Commissioners, this is the Rubio trial, which, as we alluded, Edinburgh, we're asking for a neighborhood of $50,000 to $60,000 for expenses to move everyone over there to try the case. And I had a, I guess, a request from the county judge to explain why we would have to actually stay over there during the trial. And what I tried to explain to the county judge, and I'll explain to everyone here, is that the courtroom activity is not all that we do for that particular day. We have to expend almost the same amount of time outside the courtroom to prepare for the next day. An example would be today, there's, they have a motion to suppress that's ongoing in Edinburgh today on this case. We were at the office till 10:00 PM last night, getting ready for this morning. They have to be there at 8:00 in the morning in Edinburgh, so they have to leave here usually by 6:30 or so to make sure they get there. They're still in the actual hearing, and it's 6:30 right now. So the fact that an ordinary day is eight to five usually doesn't apply during a trial. I know that it's expensive, I know we're, everybody's pretty much out of funds, exhausted all funds, but I'm really almost begging you guys to help us out with this, because it's gonna really harm our office if we're having to come back at midnight and turn around and leave in the morning.
Yeah, Mr. V., let me ask you just a couple of things. And the reason I think we want to put this on, because the policy that we have addresses specifically that travel within.
For a county.
Yeah, within a county radius, so I think in order to adopt this, we'd have to make an exception to the, to the travel policy. Within the parameters of the expense that you're talking about, are we still gonna follow the maximum per diem in terms of hotel? And do we need to also include a per diem for meals, or is it just strictly for hotel? In terms of what, do we have to look at that as well? Because the only thing that you talked about, and I wanted to bring that up in case you, you know, you forgot, that part of the, part of the travel policy is that you get, I don't know, 25 bucks a day for meals, okay? Plus $85, I think, for, maximum of $85 for hotel?
Hundred.
Is it a hundred now? Okay. And so as long as it falls with that, but what are your thoughts about the meals? I mean, we're gonna make an exception to the travel. Are y'all willing to pick up, you know, just your own meals, and we'll just pay for the, for the hotel? Would that be all right?
I think we can do that, Judge. I think the, I think we were calculating 85 per night, and it came with a breakfast, and I think we could pretty much.
I don't have any problem doing that. If we can do that to, you know, the 85 or whatever that per diem is, obviously the less expensive, the better, and y'all handle your own meals as a, as a good compromise, I don't have any problem with that.
Eat a heavy breakfast.
Yes, you all do.
Right, you know, we'll have Chucky twice in the morning. But, but yeah, the basic is just having space. We have to move everything.
How many, how many people are we talking about?
We're, we're looking at about five or six, depending on the day. We have, I wish I could be there every day, but I can't, so I won't be there every day. But the trial team consists of three attorneys that are there every day. We would need a secretarial staff there daily. We're gonna be rotating somebody back and forth. An investigator would be needed at times, depending on if something comes up that we've gotta address. And of course, our IT guy. We're in a, in a different county, and we're having to adopt and use their things, and that wouldn't be every day either. That would be when we have certain videos that we gotta play, or certain presentations that we gotta present, so that's, we're not counting everybody being there every day. The bulk of it is the trial team itself.
You anticipate in a couple of weeks, or?
Well, we're looking at possibly two to three months. It's gonna take a month just to pick the jury.
But while you're picking the jury, you don't need all those folks up there, right?
No.
You just need your remain, your men guys.
And like I said, we kinda gave an estimate there, and hopefully we won't reach that, we won't reach that amount.
Well, I will tell you that many, many, many years ago, I had a, I had a job in McAllen to do for the firm, and I was there for six weeks. And it, it does wear you out driving back every day. It really does. And, and, so you don't want your employees having an accident, either on the way up or on the way back, you know? So it's, it's expensive, but it, you know, wasn't their fault, that the judge decided to move the trial, and, you know, our guys should be penalized for it, at least try to mitigate that.
We put up a big fine on that, we really did, to keep them here.
So if you're okay with that, if the court's okay, if we're just okay with the, let's say, $85 per day, you know? For actual expenses? Or actual, whichever, whichever's less, okay? If you can find a nice, you know, y'all take care of the, of your, of your food consumption. That's a good compromise, we'll make an exception, if it's okay with you all, to make an exception to the, to our travel policy. On that one. On that one, this will kind of set a good, a good template for any future out of town change of venue trials. Now, now we get, if everyone's okay with that, then let's go to the next step, the terms of the funding source. Where is it? Kind of, we were sweeping.
Fund nighting?
Fund nighting? Because, because we were sweeping.
We're having to spend a lot on legal fees, okay?
The fund nighting, man, we have some really bad news with that. That'll come at a later date, but we're, I think we're going to.
Just say bad news for one episode of a meeting, okay?
We're scheduled to be at $44,000 by October with a budget of 1.2 for the following year. So I suspect that we're probably going to have to lay off about 10 to 12 people at the DA's office between now and September.
So let's go back to the, you know, to that.
You missed the first part of the meeting, you know? We talked about the budget. That's kind of like the general.
Let's go back to a funding source, because originally the court had asked Martha to sweep the lab salaries to start covering some of your, some of your expert witnesses. And the last time, didn't you try to sweep benefits? Is that where you're going to do that?
We, we have started sweeping fringe benefits as well. I don't know if that's the directive of the court. I really, at this point, I know that there's other fees that are being incurred in addition to, on behalf of the DA for this same case, and those costs continue to accrue, and we're paying them as we have funding available. So at this point, I don't know how much we have available in lapsed fringe.
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't have to accrue the whole amount now. It's going to be as, as it comes in. It's not going to be $60,000 by next week. This is going to be spread out. I think that number that you're looking at is within the next two to three month period. Obviously, the shorter the trial, the less the money. So that's what you're looking at, right?
We actually, I don't think we actually, actually start the trial until mid-June.
Okay, so we have time to start accumulating some monies, and then after that, on a monthly basis, it's going to be maybe $10,000 to $15,000.
And also, you don't know yet how many people you have to have up there per week. I mean, that will change, will it not?
Right.
Just added to the same bunch of.
Well, while we do that, just start using the, what you suggested, the fringe benefits start sweeping, accumulating, and to take care of those.
I mean, one week it might be, you know, like, three people over there. One week it might be five.
Right. Well, the only thing too is that, one of the reasons we didn't want it to move to Edinburgh was because it's his home court, the judge's home court, so we could all show up ready to go, and he could say, tell you what, guys, I don't want to start until Friday. And then we could all come home and wait until Friday. So we're at the mercy of his schedule as well. So if he says, we're not going today, we're not going to sit around in McAllen, we're all going to come back home so we can do what we need to do here. So we're going to try to limit it as much as possible. It's just when we're in the thick of things and when we're there, we're not going to have any other choice but to stay there.
Okay, so then, can I hear a motion of, you know, to do what I recommended?
Slow move.
Okay?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, consideration authorization to utilize JP Technology Funds to purchase three computers for JP 7-1. I don't see Judge Goncalo's here. Did he visit anybody?
Second.
Do we have money in the JP Technology Fund to do that?
Yes.
Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Item G, consideration possible appointment of seven board of directors to the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. Ms. Melvin, with Tamayo is here. We have two appointed. I guess I get to appoint one more, and I've asked, are you all ready? We've been working on this for a couple of months or a couple of years. If y'all are ready to give her a name, or, anybody ready to give her a name yet?
I'll have my name by tomorrow.
Okay, you have a name by tomorrow, Commissioner Gadsden?
Do you want the call, or do we call her direct?
You know, I would call Delvia, because Delvia's the contact person.
You can email me the names, and then I can give it to Mrs. Tamayo.
Because I'm waiting to get a call.
And how often do you have your meetings?
Our meetings are once a month.
Once a month? During the day?
At Child Protective Services.
Or in the evening?
Usually at 5:30 or 6 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Usually in the afternoon.
I'll have the name by tomorrow.
But I will tell you, Melvin's been so patient for years with this. I think we're finally going to get there to make this thing work the way it's intended to work. And so tomorrow, you should have at least two, maybe three names, since I was just told a few minutes ago that I had an extra one. I'll have to think about that, but for now, you're my, you're me the appointee. So if that's okay, all right? She'll get with you. Anything you want to add?
Yes.
Okay, shoot.
Okay, my name is Melvin Tamayo, and I thank you all for your time and your patience with our, our situation. I just want to thank you for putting us on the agenda. This board is needed to help the children of our community. We have been pleading with this commission and the previous judge and commission to put people, good people, on this board, and I know that you all are going to do that. So I'm so, I'm finally, I'm very glad that you all are finally going to do something about this. I have invited the judge and the commissioners numerous times to our events, which include a foster parent appreciation banquet, our zoo event in the summer, which we do in coalition with Blue Sunday, which we take all the children to the zoo with their foster parents, and also a back-to-school supply drive, and our big event is our Christmas party, which includes all of the children who are in care, those being housed by the state and those being housed by other family members. The only one that has come to show his support for our kids is Judge Gasco. Even if sometimes only for a little while, I appreciate what he takes, that he takes the time out of his busy schedule to show the kids and everyone who helps, that he cares. Sorry. This is just very hard for me. I guess I could never be a public speaker, huh? Having said that, I would like to formally invite you all to come to our foster parent appreciation banquet, being held on May the 8th at Coyote Canyon. I also would like to see if maybe you all could designate someone here in your offices to receive the donations we receive from jury duty money. That money has kept this board alive while our board has not been complete. Having said that, I would love to thank anyone who has donated their jury duty proceeds to our organization. You are helping some great kids. I ask this of you because as of now, our donations come by mail to Child Protective Services, where we hold our meetings, and on Price Road. But as per request and orders of Mr. Hector Ortiz, who is the new program director for Child Protective Services here in Cameron, he wants no link to an organization that does not have a complete board. Mr. Ortiz comes to us from Hidalgo County and claims that their board and their judge and their commissioners do a fabulous job. I would like to prove him wrong. I would like to prove to him that our commissioners and our judge are going to do that and more. Thank you all for your time, and briefly, I'd also like to see if, if at any moment you all have a space available at the courthouse where the child cases are held. If there's a room that comes available, we have several organizations that are willing to decorate it for us and stuff, because last year, Ms. Benavides helped us get a small room before the construction started. Now that the construction has ended, we've been given the boot, and the kids all wait in the hallway. And, and it's not, it's cruel. I mean, these children have gone through enough, and I think they deserve a space to wait and not have to hear all the commotion and anger that is going on during these proceedings. And I thank you for your time.
What time? Yeah, what time is this thing on the 8th?
It's from 11:30 to 3 o'clock.
What date? Is that Saturday?
It's a, it's a Saturday.
11:30 to what?
8 o'clock. Oh, no, 11:30 to 2:00, sorry.
No more, no more Peter Piper?
That's, that's our Christmas party.
All right.
The foster parent appreciation banquet is the very, is the, one of the few days that our foster parents actually get to go out without the children. We, we get them, we get everyone some, some sitters, and we get pizzas or movies or whatever we can to help them with the kids, and they get their one night out to have a good time. So that's, that's what we do.
I think you'll get most of the people on this commission there this Saturday, on the, on the 8th. I can pretty guarantee you, at least two of us will be there. Thank you. In terms of the space, I mean, you know, we're limited with space. Let me address your, your money situation first.
A closet, we'll stay in a closet.
Okay, we got a closet for you. I think the money that collected gets to you, Martha, right?
Sorry?
The money that gets collected through the jury fees, then that get deposited into somewhere of the county's account, then you cut a check to some.
Is the county, the district clerk?
Yes.
Does that have the check to?
Yes, to Cameron County Child Welfare.
Well, that's where it would stay, Melvin. I just don't know where you'd want it to go.
Okay, well, can it stay there until our board's completed?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think we're, we're real close to getting this thing done, so let's just kind of hold off and, you know, keep your powder dry. We'll be fine.
Okay.
On Robert, Robert Lopez, get with him. He's our, he's, you know, he knows where all the offices and nooks and crannies are. Let's see if we have something available. I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's pretty, pretty tight spaced over there, but if we have something available, he can find it. Maybe even if we have something, I don't even think we have anything in this building. But, but let's shoot for the other one and just get with Robert.
I will.
When you get a chance, see what you got.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to, well, let's go ahead and table this item, because we're not ready to do that, and then just bring it back. We get the names over to, to Delvia so we can pass it on, okay? Let me, let me hear a motion to table item G.
Slow move.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carey's. Last item, consideration possible action regarding reimbursements from FEMA?